This is the Thursday, December 5th, 2019 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Carla, could you please call the rule?
You, Daly?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Fish? Hardisney? Wheeler?
Here.
Hi, Robert.
Hello, Mayor.
What are Robert's rules of order today?
Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you. And just a housekeeping item for those of you waiting for items 1127 or 1128, which are time certens at 4:00 p.m., both of those are going to be moved. I don't think there's anybody here for that, but just in case, I'll make that announcement later. So Carla, the first item is 1125. Could you please read that?
Adopt the Southwest in Motion Plan and its recommendations.
Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. Southwest in Motion is a near-term prioritization refinement and implementation strategy for planned active transportation investments in southwest Portland. The final plan identifies a realistic short-term action plan that provides basic walking and bicycling infrastructure where it's needed most. Here to walk us through the plan and answer your questions, I hope, is Senior Transportation Planner Nick Falbo. There's Nick. Okay, sorry, I looked everywhere but right at you. Welcome, Nick, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Daly, Commissioner Fritz, Mayor Wheeler, thank you for your time.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Southwest in Motion, as Commissioner Daly said, it's a short-term action plan for improving walking and biking in southwest Portland. The draft recommendations suggest small changes that we think have big impacts that can incrementally build upon southwest Portland streets. The plan itself is affectionately known as SWIM, Southwest in Motion SWIM. You may hear that from some of the public testimony. This is the plan that they're talking about. The plan before you today is an implementing plan for our citywide pedestrian and bicycle master plans. These master plan documents make bold proclamations and vision statements, calling walking a fundamental human right and stating that all Portlanders should have equal access to the benefits of bicycling. Parts of Portland live up to these statements today, but this vision has not been realized in many other parts of our city, such as East Portland and southwest Portland. Our commitment to these master plans obligate us to address these deficiencies, and this plan, Southwest in Motion, is designed to help make this happen. It's easy to see the deficiencies in our system on the map of sidewalk presence across the city. The streets in Burgundy show where no sidewalk is present on either side of the street, largely concentrated in East Portland and more dramatically in southwest Portland. It's solving this problem that the plan is all about, but because of the scale of the problem and the costs involved are huge. We're not going to be getting sidewalks on all of the collector and arterial streets in southwest Portland in any short amount of time. In order to act in the short term, we're going to need creative solutions. The plan recommends bare bones infrastructure to bring basic walking and biking infrastructure to southwest streets and identifies pragmatic solutions to these challenging problems. Southwest in Motion is a part of a suite of in-motion planning efforts. The in-motion plans allow for a deeper understanding of local challenges, and they devise context-sensitive strategies and solutions to address those issues. You're probably familiar with Central City in Motion, recently adopted by City Council. This really builds upon the successful East Portland in Motion adopted back in 2011 that prioritized walking and biking investments to meet their needs, and we've expanded that framework into other parts of town. In Southwest in Motion, this emerged from a need to address significant geographic and historical barriers to walking and biking in southwest, to right-size our expensive capital projects, to leverage BES funds, and prioritize pedestrian Vision Zero and Safe Routes to school projects. The area lacks a cohesive vision and an implementable pedestrian and bicycle network, and this plan hopes to provide that. The plan itself recommends priority short-term walking and biking projects. It identifies short-term crossing enhancements to make safe routes to school and pedestrian crossings safer. It recommends other potential road safety enhancements for those streets where we can't be providing bikeways or walkways. It identifies key programs to support community-initiated projects in southwest, and it identifies policy initiatives to advance walking and biking in the area. This short-term plan, though, has long-term aspirations. The city of Portland has bold goals to increase the rates of walking and biking and transit citywide. By 2035, we will have a citywide target of 70% of trips made up of non-single occupancy vehicles, non-driving trips. But we can't expect changes in behavior or safety without making changes to our streets. Fully implementing Southwest in Motion will not achieve these bold targets in southwest Portland. Our TSP targets are a 20-year goal, and our plan is a short-term plan, but it is an important part of setting the trajectory for where we will head. You can see on this chart here, Southwest in Motion implementation over the next five to 10 years, that's only one piece of the puzzle. This is in combination with the rise of electric micromobility such as e-bikes and scooters, as well as the implementation of Southwest Corridor Light Rail and the re-centering of population growth in centers and corridors built around those transportation investments. The planning process started with the recommendations from our past citywide plans, from our bicycle master plan, from PED-PDX, from Safe Routes to School. These past plans also informed our project list and unlocked new tools and ideas for us to use when planning in southwest. Updates to the transportation system plan allowed us to install sidewalks on one side of a street instead of trying to build sidewalks on both everywhere, and PED-PDX gave us new tools to consider as we implement projects on streets that maybe don't even need sidewalks. Public engagement helped narrow down this list of projects into the list that we recommend The public engagement for the plan used a full suite of engagement tools and techniques involving ongoing stakeholder working group meetings, public open house events, online mapping, surveys, and online engagement. We met with citywide advisory committees, including the Portland Commission on Disability, to verify our use of alternative design standards. We got closest to the community with our community focus groups. We met with affordable housing residents at Stevens Creek Crossing, we met with Somali families at Markham Elementary School, and we met with international students attending PCC Sylvania. These focus groups informed on-the-ground needs as well as our project prioritization and analysis. The engagement was all about setting priorities. Top priorities ranked in the surveys included safety, focusing on locations with a high rate of crashes and documented safety concern, future demand, finding locations where there's high concentrations of people and activity. We looked at the network role of all of the links to prioritize those interconnected streets that connected our town centers and regional destinations to one another, and we focused on equity, serving our underserved communities in southwest, built upon the PBOT equity matrix. The plan recommends project types that you are probably familiar with: sidewalks, neighborhood greenways, and bike lanes. These are important facilities across all of Portland and are important in southwest as well. The plan also recommends more innovative facility types. These are new ideas and innovative solutions to be used in geographically and financially constrained areas. This is the first plan to apply the new alternative pedestrian walkway designs from the recently adopted PED-PDX plan. For example, this diagram illustrates a pedestrian shared street. This is a street designed to be so calm and so quiet that cars are guests and pedestrians are welcome to take over the street as they walk down it. We're recommending this facility on a variety of streets, including southwest Bertha Boulevard, where it is a critical link in the Red Electric Trail. Another example of an alternative pedestrian walkway is what we call a safer shoulder. This is a widened shoulder on the edge of a roadway designated and designed as places for people to walk and, in some cases, perhaps bike. On busy streets, a physical barrier provides protection, such as, you know, maybe similar to what you see on some of our protected bike lanes today. We're recommending this facility where sidewalks are challenging to implement, on Markham Hill Road and on spots along Boone's Ferry Road, among others. While these are new ideas, we've already experimented with them in southwest Portland. We have shared streets on southwest 19th Avenue, and we have safer shoulders on southwest Capitol Highway. We will take the lessons that we've learned from these efforts as we expand their use elsewhere. And by using these new tools, we can dramatically expand our walking and biking network in southwest and create a connected network that is the key to unlocking the possibilities of active transportation for more people. We have 49 top-tier projects ranging the full gamut of facility types. Where possible, these projects support walking and biking to support both of our multimodal needs. You can see here kind of today's existing sort of established walking and biking route network. On the right, you see that expanded network that Southwest in Motion is recommending. The plan describes what we call planning-level project concepts. These are scopes with general information about the facility type, the extent of the project, the basic design elements, but we haven't answered every question. Final details for every project, such as full dimensions, which side of the road the facility might be on, the level of separation between users, this will be decided as a part of project implementation. There are still many questions left on these projects, and while we have the idea, we need to get into those details. That will be done in combination with public involvement and close communication with community members. A key piece of the plan is working with our other bureaus, working closely with the Bureau of Environmental Services. We can do more with less. In particular, safer shoulders is an opportunity. It's a good illustration of potential partnership projects, where BES has an interest in improving roadside drainage and water quality, and we have an interest in improving safety and walkability in an area. We can collaborate on these projects so that we can reduce costs for both bureaus, create a more effective end product, and do that with only ripping up the road once in one construction phase. This is an example of southwest 19th Avenue, what it looked like before in the upper-left corner and what it looked like after as a joint solution, working with BES to establish a pedestrian shared street and a pedestrian-only connection where there used to be unimproved roadway. Together, these bureaus can reduce risk, improve safety, and do that in a cost-effective manner. The plan also celebrates our partnerships with community groups. The plan encourages participation in our Portland in the Streets community-led programs, specifically Portland Pathways, our new streamlined process for community groups to implement trail connections on unimproved rights-of-way. We value and appreciate the great work of community groups such as Southwest Trails. These informal connections can bring great values to communities, and PBOT has worked hard to create a lower barrier to entry for making these projects real on the ground. Like many plans, this plan is unfunded. It doesn't directly reallocate resources within the bureau. It's designed to work with ongoing funding streams and implementation pipelines, including fixing our streets and ongoing discussions about the transportation system development charges, local transportation improvement charge, LTIC, as well as our ongoing quick-build network development. And these are lower-cost projects that can be done with our lower-cost funding sources. But really, it's about the future, and this plan guides project selection for future funding sources. We can anticipate, but we don't guarantee these future funding sources. These are things like fixing our streets, too, renewing the gas tax, or the Metro 2020 transportation measure. We want these funding sources. We need these funding sources to make Southwest in Motion a reality, and we're already referring to the draft plan as we have conversations internally to try to program those future funding sources. In closing, the plan offers pragmatic solutions to hard challenges. It creates a list of right-sized projects adapted to the unique challenges of the area, and it primes us for future funding. It's not designed to limit us, but it's designed to focus us, and your vote today can give us the direction to pursue these projects and policy recommendations with confidence. We look forward to continuing the work with our community members and bureau partners to make this plan a reality. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Nick, could I ask you a question on Slide 7? Can you go back to Slide 7?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you can bring that up. It's really just a question about the data. Where people taking transit is expected to increase fairly dramatically over the course of the timeframe. What assumptions are behind that?
The core assumption has to do with Southwest Corridor Light Rail. This is the extension of our high-capacity, high-frequency transit network to get max light rail down Barber Boulevard as the core connecting spine in southwest Portland.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fritz, did you have a question?
Yeah, how did you consider where multifamily housing is zoned and/or built in looking at where to prioritize the projects?
With our prioritization-on-demand sort of level of anticipated activity, it heavily prioritized those areas that have high concentrations of population, including high-density housing, which is largely focused in our town center areas. So those planning frameworks of town centers in West Portland Town Center and Hillsdale, areas like that, get prioritized heavily when we're looking at what links can help create the strongest network.
Thank you. So I'm looking at page 35, which is the map of the top-tier projects, and the one along southwest 35th, instead of considering continuing along southwest 35th, where it turns around and goes on Taylor's Ferry, which is where the multifamily housing is, goes then through the neighborhood. So have you, did you look at the Better Housing by Design infill projects and where planning is intending to add more housing? Was that considered?
We did not specifically look at the Better Housing by Design development. I can tell you specifically about this link where it travels through the neighborhood. It was more about this idea of cost-effectively connecting neighborhoods. This connection from 35th up to Taylor's Ferry, today we could build a neighborhood greenway connection for only a fraction of the cost of what improvements along Taylor's Ferry would cost. This doesn't take away the need for improvements on Taylor's Ferry, but it does kind of prioritize how we can connect people in a cost-effective manner.
But that's where the multifamily housing is. So there isn't a sidewalk to connect the multifamily housing to any other sidewalks that would get you to the frequent transit?
That's definitely a challenge in southwest. As part of development review, we'd expect sidewalks to be built close to that, but you're right, it's a huge gap. And this plan does not recommend tremendous lengths of sidewalks, because we haven't, frankly, been particularly effective at identifying the amount of funds necessary to build those links. This could be a candidate for a safer shoulder treatment, and maybe there's a way of providing a connection in collaboration with other bureaus.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I didn't see it on the safer shoulder list either. Then the other concern I have is around Gabriel Park and the Southwest Community Center. You've got a project that has walking and bicycle improvements going towards Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway, but it doesn't connect to Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway, and there's no connection to the south, which is where more of the low-income housing in southwest is. So there's no way for people to walk from the West Portland Town Center to get to Gabriel
Yes, that project actually is one of the first projects to have been built. It's a new bike lane connection. This is what we're talking about on 45th Avenue, near Gabriel Park?
Yeah.
That actually has been striped just a few weeks ago, so we have a new bike lane connection now, which does connect from our established bikeway network to the north to the community center there in Gabriel Park.
I'm talking to the south.
And correct, to the south, it doesn't connect through. We've definitely had to make a lot of compromises. This isn't a master plan. PED-PDX, our pedestrian master plan, does identify both Taylor's Ferry and 45th as routes in need of pedestrian walkways, and those have been prioritized as a part of that project. They did not rise to the top as highest priority. To the degree possible, recommendations in this plan have meant to be aligned with the recommendations of PED-PDX.
And how did that consider equity?
PED-PDX?
Any of this planning, how did the needs of the folks living in the multifamily buildings in the West Portland Town Center factor into weighting of these different projects and where those folks need to be able to get to?
Equity was factored into our prioritization as kind of an enhancement of the current PBOT equity matrix, which looks at English language and poverty and race to identify which areas should be prioritized for investment. We enhanced that in Southwest in Motion, trying to look at a finer grain, to try to look at where more density is located. We also enhanced it to try to look at where people with disabilities are, and that was used to score some areas higher than others. It does identify kind of core zones, get more prioritization. Some of these links between areas maybe don't score as highly. That section of 45th, for example, doesn't have much development actually along it.
What's the purpose of having like this RP07?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem to connect to anything. What's the purpose of having improvements that don't connect to anything?
It does connect actually to neighborhood greenways that exist on Illinois Street, as well as some future planned neighborhood greenways, as well farther to the north on Pendleton. So it does provide a connection from the neighborhoods to the north down to the community center.
But not to Beaverton-Hillsdale or to Multnomah Boulevard or anything else?
It does not. It actually kind of gets to kind of a dead end up there before it gets to Beaverton-Hillsdale Boulevard, and it's through the neighborhood, actually, that most of the residents there travel and connect to destinations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Very good.
Thank you, Nick.
Do you have invited testimony here or just right to public?
I think we just go right to public comment?
For invited testimony?
Yeah. Do we have invited testimony?
We do. We've got three members of the public that we'd like to invite up.
Wait, sorry, I shouldn't have flipped back to the very first page. We have David Stein, Catherine Christensen, and Leah Safran. If you could come to the table, welcome, and make sure, and state your name for the record before you begin.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hey, thank you. Guess I'll kick this off. My name is David Stein, and I'm here on behalf of the Portland Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'm the vice chairperson. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Daly, and thank you to Nick for the presentation and the invitation. I want to start by just asking you to adopt this plan. There's a lot in here. It is certainly not perfect. I'm sure we will talk a lot about that, but it provides a good framework, and it provides policies that the community can lean on to help fix a lot of the structural issues that we have in our transportation network. And one of those notes is, please, in implementing this, I just want to make sure that we don't pit people on bicycles against people on foot as we're implementing many of these projects, because as we're talking about safer shoulders and advisory shoulders, we haven't done it before, and it's very easy to go back to just favoring autos, which is not something that I think is in any of our plans. So to start, we have a long history of missed opportunities, which is part of why SWIM is so important. When I was Chair of Brightmont Neighborhood Association, we saw many developments planned and some that we fought partially on transportation. With one of them at Hamilton and 58th, there's a lot that was split, and it triggered frontage improvements. What normally would have been required would have been a sidewalk, bike lane, and then the two standard lanes that were already there. Instead, that was trimmed down to a four-foot shoulder. It was later increased to a six-foot shoulder, but it's also a shoulder that connects to nowhere. It connects nothing. Fast forward a couple of years to last year, and another development at effectively 59th and Hamilton came to life, and it came before PBOT, and they actually recommended that sidewalks and bike lanes be installed on the other side of the street. The Neighborhood Association appealed to folks at PBOT to please make these frontage improvements on the other side, and we got nowhere, and it also got downgraded to a shoulder instead of any kind of sidewalk, any kind of protected infrastructure. And there are policies within SWIM that do allow for more of a framework to... And there are policies within SWIM that do allow for more of a framework to help push back and to help appeal to this because, as a result now, we have probably a couple dozen older trees that have been completely removed for a shoulder that connects to nothing, and you can just look across the street and see the other shoulder that it would connect to. Another missed opportunity is one from BES with Hamilton Swales. It was half of a Swales project in southwest Portland where they're trying out something new. So they used a bunch of sandbags and extended the shoulder as a result. So we have a four-foot shoulder now on one side of Hamilton. Unfortunately, they didn't quite finish the connection, so there's about 30 feet between the end of the shoulder and where a sidewalk picks up at the corner of, I believe it's 47th and Hamilton. And we noted this in all the plans, and we got in touch with BES. We asked, well, is there anything we can do? And we asked, well, can you talk to PBOT? And throughout the whole process, and even after it was installed, we didn't get it. And now, as a result, it's, I believe, BP-43 within SWIM to install a sidewalk infill because a project that was done three years ago wasn't totally done. So I want to move now to some walks with my kids, or some transportation episodes with my kids. So a few months ago, actually week before, this was first supposed to go before council, I walked my daughter to school. We live on a safe route to school. It's a straight shot. It's only a few blocks. There are no sidewalks. There are no shoulders. There are no curbs. There's just cars, and they travel fast, which is why two new speed bumps got built over the summer. And as we were crossing Hamilton with some flaggers, they, the person who stopped, who's driving a car, rolled down her window and said, "I really can't see you. There's too much glare," because at that time of year, the glare on Hamilton is quite bad, "and we really should remove this crosswalk because it isn't safe." And that's the kind of mentality that there is in Southwest. It's very auto-centric because people don't walk, people don't bike. My family is an abnormality because I bike commute every day. We walk our daughter to school, and I bike with my son to school, to his pre-K. And every day when I bike to him, bike with him to pre-K, he's on the tag-along, and we're on Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway, where for over two years now, we have waited for the implementation of the funded Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway Safety Demonstration Project. It was one of the first projects announced in fixing our streets. And I mention this because I'm going to later ask for funding, but funding isn't enough because we have to actually build these things. We can have all the money in the world, and it sounds like, to a degree, PBOT has more funding than they've had in the past, but without this infrastructure being on the ground, the fact that this project is funded and has been funded doesn't help people crossing at 35th and Beaverton-Hillsdale, doesn't help people trying to cross at DASH in Beaverton-Hillsdale on a crosswalk that's supposed to be there. It doesn't help people walking and biking from 30th to 39th because it's not there. It's just paint. And I have a little prop here, and this is one of the plastic wands that was installed a few months ago, well, probably more recently than that. But in July, there was evidently a quick-build project that went in on Beaverton-Hillsdale between 18th and 30th, and as a result, a whole bunch of these plastic wands were installed. Since that time, about three dozen have been knocked over, destroyed, and left either in a ditch or in the bike lane. This one came from a bike lane. And a lot of what's in SWIM is just this, or it's paint. And it's inexpensive, but it shouldn't necessarily be the end game. And so what am I asked to you is, beyond funding SWIM, or the projects in SWIM and getting them implemented, also going back and giving the tools and the resources so that if something isn't working, that it's not providing the protection and the safe travels that are intended, making sure that there's the ability to go back and upgrade it so that people can actually feel safe. Because right now, the reason why people don't walk is because they have the choice to just drive their car. And we want to get them walking. We want to get them biking, and there's a lot of potential in Southwest because no one does, very few people do either. And I just encourage you very much to please fund this project, work to get it implemented, and don't let this be just like the bike plan where my grandkids will be lucky to see it finished. I really want to see this one finished before my kids are out of high school. They're four and six. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Question. Hello, I'm Catherine Christensen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you today. I'm speaking to you as a Southwest Neighborhood Volunteer. I'm a transportation chair, and I'm active on the Sweeney Board and the West Portland Town Center Community Advisory Council. I want to tell you how much I appreciate working with PBOT on SWIM. Transportation is all about infrastructure. We needed to identify a priority network and secondary roads to connect Southwest Portland in the north-south and east-west directions and find the most cost-effective means to achieve this, and we did that with SWIM. I want to share with you some numbers. In the 2035 comp plan, the goals for Portland are to get to 75% of our commute trips without vehicles in 2035. That's just 15 years from now. Right at the moment, we are at about 7% with pedestrian and bicycling, and the goal is to get to three times that many, up to almost 25%. And when I added up all of the funding that is being proposed as part of the SWIM project, there's only $50 million to get three times as much bicycling and walking in Portland. Whereas I look at what roads cost the city, what public transportation costs the city, those are in the billions, and the numbers really are not even that much of an increase as there is the goal for pedestrian and bicycling to be accomplished during that same timeframe. And we have the added benefits with SWIM of living a healthier lifestyle, meeting the clean air quality goals and noise ordinances in our city. Currently, if you don't have a car in Southwest Portland, you're housebound. Walking and riding on the fog line isn't safe for anyone. Only people who own cars can live and work here. The state of Southwest Portland roads makes it impossible to achieve equity and inclusion. My family is quite fortunate in that we actually have an electric car and, more importantly, two electric bikes. We are the future. Seattle, with its similar topography to Southwest Portland, has bikes buzzing around everywhere, and many of them are shared. Getting around traffic and reducing traffic jams with active transportation leverages our very expensive streets for trips that cannot be done otherwise. We don't need more roads. We need SWIM. The recommended facilities developed and used by SWIM for Southwest Portland enable safer walking and biking for short-term projects, and the interim for, or partial implementations of long-term and major projects, some projects can be implemented with as little as $5,000, while others need more funding. Existing sources, collaborative and matching funds from other agencies such as the BES, and future funding sources like gas taxes and LTIC need to be explored and solidified so SWIM projects can be financed. SWIM needs committed funding. SWIM also needs an implementation strategy. These projects are critical to be completed now for a safe network for active transportation. We cannot wait. People are pouring into the neighborhoods and jamming up the roads. We need everyone to be able to get to commute without a car. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Leah Safran, and I'm a member of the Jewish community in Southwest Portland in the Hillsdale neighborhood, where the largest population of affiliated Jews in Portland live. It's Oregon's only Jewish neighborhood. After the original Jewish neighborhood in what is now considered South Downtown Portland was razed as part of a massive urban renewal project to clear so-called troubled areas and make way for the construction of the 405 freeway, high-rises, and parking, the community was impelled to move to a new neighborhood where they could rebuild homes and sacred spaces. The move came at great expense and sacrifice, but since then, the initial seeds of community planted in a concentrated area of Southwest Portland have grown into a thriving infrastructure of Jewish communal organizations, including the bustling JCC, six synagogues, a study center, various Jewish nonprofits, including a construction company building tiny homes for the unhoused, kosher restaurants, youth groups, three preschools, and two K-8 schools. This is our home, and we are here to stay. I am a member of the Orthodox Jewish community, a subset of the larger Jewish community, which includes some 200 families and growing, who intentionally live within walking distance of all of this Jewish communal infrastructure. We live here so that we can learn together, celebrate the Sabbath and the Hebrew holidays collectively, and share meals in each other's homes. Being a pedestrian is integral to our unique way of life. Each week on Shabbat for a period of 25 hours, and also on a number of reoccurring Jewish holidays, which can sometimes last up to 73 consecutive hours, we do not travel or ride in any sort of motor vehicle. During that time, we are also prohibited from carrying cell phones or even pushing the walk signals on signalized crossings. Yet we continue to come together on foot at various times of day and night as part of a tradition which dates back some 3,500 years. We have no choice but to walk. Adequate pedestrian infrastructure, including sidewalks, safer shoulders, and designated crossings are all critical in maintaining our community cohesion and safety. Unfortunately, throughout our neighborhood, our safety is compromised at countless locations from Multnomah Village north to Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway and beyond, and from Wilson High School west across the border into Beaverton. In some, in many places, this involves fast, high-traffic roads with no sidewalk shoulders or safe crossings. While over the years, we thankfully have seen great improvements in certain areas, like the invaluable sidewalks constructed along portions of Southwest Vermont, there are considerable gaps which prevent safe passage. Although we map out the safest walking routes possible, often there is no getting around the dangers, like at the intersection of two arterial streets, Southwest Capitol Highway and Southwest Vermont in the heart of the Jewish community, and only steps from the largest Orthodox synagogue in Oregon. A critical part of this intersection neither provides a safe place for pedestrians to wait to cross, nor a signal, nor even a crossing. This extremely dangerous intersection more or less divides the community geographically in two. Its nonsensical design, a generation's-old remnant of the days of the historic street car, requires community members, often families with many very young children and also the elderly, to risk their lives each time they have to dash across it. As part of Southwest In Motion, as part of the Southwest In Motion Plan, PBOT met with Jewish community members to assess their needs and specifically address this intersection, along with many other unsafe pedestrian areas in the neighborhood, and has recommended solutions to make it both safer in the near term and permanently. Pedestrian safety infrastructure upgrades, which would greatly help the Jewish community, perfectly overlap with the needs of the broader community in the Southwest. When you consider the needs of a community like ours, you end up supporting everyone. Safety for the Jewish community, along with its history of civic engagement, which includes five Portland mayors drawn from our community, is not only about walking around our neighborhood. In this world of uncertain political climates and rising hostilities, we are also exposed to other threats which make us feel even more acutely the need to be secure in our neighborhood. Adopting the plan before you today would not only support the Jewish community and every resident of Southwest Portland, but it will allow us all to be safer and to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you. Appreciate it.
That is all for our invited testimony. And Mayor, I just want to mention that before we take the vote, I need to propose a substitute for Exhibit A, and I'm going to call Nick back up to explain that. We could do it now, or we could do it after?
Why don't we do it now, just so we don't forget?
All right. So I move, I'm proposing a substitute for Exhibit A.
Exhibit A has been updated since we previously filed the council docs to include an Appendix D, which is specifically designed to respond to questions from the community about implementation to try to further collect the information in the plan and put it in an easy-to kind of track format to make it easier for us to do future monitoring of the plan in the coming years so we can help kind of keep ourselves honest and keep us committed to making this happen.
Second. Thank you. I'm very much in support of that. I want to thank everyone for coming today. I know there was some disappointment that this item was pulled previously. I like to be very well briefed on these items, and I like to make sure that my office has done their due diligence with community outreach, and because of the timing of when it came, I wasn't able to achieve that, so we had to postpone it, but in the meantime, we've made it better. And this is, it's very timely because we are currently dealing with important things that keep falling through the cracks, so anything to keep us accountable, better accountable is a good thing.
Very good. So we have a, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fritz?
Nick, could you come back to the mic, please? So since this wasn't attached to the council's agenda, will it be posted on the transportation's website, or where can people find this?
The update is live online and actually should be in the package that you all have received.
And how would people find where to look?
Our project website, it's been same site for the duration of the plan. It's there, and--
If they go to Portland Online, they go to transportation--
Yep. PortlandOregon.gov/transportation/SWIM.
Slash SWIM. Thank you very much.
Not even that hard to remember.
Very good. Carla, we have a motion for the substitute. It was moved by Commissioner Daley, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Why don't we go ahead and call the roll?
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Substitute's on the table. All right, public testimony. How many people do we have, Carla?
We have 11.
Very good.
The first three, please come on up, are Ryan Bass, John Gibbon, and Keith Layden.
Three minutes each, please. Name for the record. The microphones move around about six inches from your mouth is the right distance, and when you hear the buzzer go off after three minutes, if you please wrap it up. Why don't you go ahead and start for us, please?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Ryan Bass, and I'm here today to say that I support the Southwest In Motion Plan and ask that the city please adopt the plan and fully fund the plan as soon as possible. I'm also here as a representative of the Brightmont Mall Neighborhood Association and have been authorized to share that the board supports the Southwest In Motion Plan. I walk my kids to school every day and accept some risk due to the lack of sidewalks on our local collector streets, Southwest Shattuck and Southwest Hamilton. I used to take the work to bus every day. Had been for 14 years. This year, I actually stopped partly because I don't want to worry anymore that I might get hit by a car. It's kind of a dangerous stretch crossing Phantom Creek right there. I'm fortunate enough to have a choice, you know, and now unfortunately, I'm in another car on the road to spread my commute. I want to take the bus to work and feel safe doing so. I don't want to continue experiencing the daily anxiety I feel walking my kids to school. So I ask, please, please give me and others hope that things will get better by adopting and funding this plan. The projects in the plan are strategic, targeted investments that will have significant return on investment in terms of supporting active transportation in Southwest Portland. One of the SWIM projects in my neighborhood addresses adding a sidewalk to a one-block stretch of Southwest Shattuck Road that crosses Phantom Creek. There aren't very many ways to get to Beaverton-Hillsdale from Brightmont neighborhood because of the creek, so they're spaced apart by, you know, five to eight blocks, and Shattuck Road is one of them, and you have to walk on a space kind of about this narrow and not fall into the creek to get there. And that project would unlock a safe walkable access to transit, grocery, and pharmacy services for many households. Another project in our neighborhood is three blocks of sidewalk on Southwest Hamilton Street, and it would unlock safe walkable access to the elementary school for a lot of kids. As an avid walker in my neighborhood, I know that the SWIM projects on Southwest Hamilton and Shattuck Road would have a transformational effect for our residents, myself included. And I just want to add, you know, looking at the plan, sometimes it seems like those little pieces don't go anywhere, like they're not really connecting anything, but they really are, and because when you're kind of on the ground walking, you kind of know how you can sneak through certain areas and other areas you can't. So some of those little tiny spots are actually really valuable. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you for being here. Good afternoon, sir.
My name is John Gibbon. I'm the Markham Transportation Chair, and I'm also active on the Sweeney Board, have been testifying before city council, I think, since 1976, so it's good to be back again. I'm here to speak and support a SWIM, although there are some concerns that I heard Commissioner Fritz mention regarding Southwest 35th. I would say that, well, you're absolutely right. We've got a problem with our isolated R2 property at the end of 35th where the Taylor's Ferry off-ramp is. We are going to get quick build for at least some improvements along 35th up towards Jackson, so on balance, you know, the SWIM project has brought benefits there. So on balance, the swim project has brought benefits there. The issue with the Indian Hills neighborhood going across there, I mean, I've got to compliment staff a lot. This has really been a good job by the transportation staff. I honestly just was reading something from BPS yesterday that told me about the Marquom Middle School that we are dealing with in southwest Portland, and told me it had been Jackson High School. So sometimes I think P-BOT and BES are a little more dialed into our neighborhoods than BPS on some of these issues. And I really think that this was responsive. They shifted the Indian Hills project from Ridge... Oh, I'm sorry. From, let me, Stanley Court to Ridge. And that's a flatter, wider street that probably will enhance both bicycle and pedestrian use. It was not one that I got directly involved in, because it brought pedestrian access closer to my specific neighborhood, so I didn't feel like I should be pushing that project. But we had other neighbors that were concerned about it, and staff was very responsive and gave the neighborhood the choice that we really favored. The other thing I would say is that this is terribly dependent on something being done on 26th Avenue, so we can get the access to Barber. I know there's been some decisions recently about the Barber Demo Project, money's being spent to enhance travel on 40th, which I support. I understand there's equity issues there, but we still need to find some money someplace for 26th.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is Keith Leyden. I served on the SWIM Advisory Committee, and I submitted written testimony on the 24th and also yesterday, and I hope you consider that in addition to my testimony today. I am here to urge you to adopt the SWIM plan and the recommended TSP amendments. I think that the staff has done a good job in providing a plan that narrows the focus of the entire universe of possible improvements that we could make in southwest into a manageable list that we can hopefully complete in the short term. I do, however, have a couple of concerns, and would hope that you might direct staff to make a couple improvements in two areas. One is on safer shoulders. The problem I see with the way safer shoulders are portrayed in the plan is that, one, the message is confused, because sometimes it talks about walkway or pedestrian-only, other times it talks about bike and ped. The illustration that is in the plan, both on pages 26 and 42, shows an exclusive walkway only with barricades to keep the cyclists and everybody else out. In that particular depiction, cyclists on that street would be in tough shape. So we shouldn't have a solution that, like David Stein said, pits one mode against another. Another example is Dash Road. It's portrayed in the TSP as being a mixed bike and ped facility as a safer shoulder. The description in the plan says it's a walkway, but then when you go to Appendix A and look at the description there, it correctly says it's a bicycle and ped facility. So there's just some inconsistency going on. The message isn't clear, and I think that a confused public is never going to be an asset. So I think that that needs some clarification. And so that would be changing the illustrations on page 26 and 42 to have something that's more generic, or maybe even a series of, here's what the design might look like in a number of different scenarios. 26 also clearly states that safer shoulders are for both modes generally. And then on page 27 and Appendix A, amend the project descriptions to be consistent. On implementation, I think that the implementation chapter is too vague. I think that Appendix D helps, but in a nutshell, what you read in the plan is that residents have to continue to advocate, and the P-BOT will try to find some money. So two things... One thing here in particular, I think, is important. Clearly, that the plan do is clearly describe the specific actions P-BOT will take to implement the important policy recommendation, which says, "P-BOT should prepare itself with appropriate funding to respond productively to development proposals, repaving projects, shared opportunities, and partner bureau projects." This is a policy recommendation that does not show up in the implementation at all. And this is very important. It ties in with the missed opportunities that others have talked about here today. We need to have some kind of protocol. How are we not going to miss opportunities like what was talked about on Hamilton, where BES puts in a shoulder, and then now we're talking about spending a half million to a million dollars to essentially redo part of that project again? You know, it's just, if we can do things quicker and cheaper...
Thank you.
What's not to like?
Exactly. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
The next three are Catherine Christensen, Karen Munford, and Mary Ann Fitzgerald.
Welcome.
Then we'll go with Lisa Caballero.
Hello. My name is Karen Munford. I live in Multnomah Village. I want to show my support for Southwest Motion, and to also show my gratitude to Nick Falbo for welcoming me to the SWIM Advisory Committee meetings last year and allowing me to have input as a concerned neighbor. His dedication for full transparency is appreciated. I would also like to emphasize why it is so critical to adopt SWIM by giving the council perspective from the point of view of a resident on one of the proposed projects in the Tryon-Stevens area, that being BP-21, that is a local service streets, or a combination of streets, of southwest Troy Street and southwest Canby, between southwest Capitol Highway and southwest Capitol Hill Road, paralleling Multnomah Boulevard just two short blocks away, like southeast Clinton and northeast Tillamook. This section is a favorite cut-through street, so that single occupancy drivers and commercial vehicles alike can avoid a few extra turns and traffic light along Multnomah Boulevard on the route to and from Barber Boulevard. This section is also a current bikeway, a proposed greenway, and an existing numbered urban trails route. It is one block from elementary school, one block from a park, a logical connector to Multnomah Village, so there's almost always a pedestrian, a jogger, family with strollers and dogs, and bikes on the street, day and night. Yet, due to the typical topography of southwest hills, they must travel single file, balancing along a shoulderless edge, keeping a constant vigilance for upwards of 2,000-plus vehicles per day. It is such a serious safety concern that my neighbor won't let her teenage daughter ride her bike along that bikeway, because it's the busy road. What is unique about this section is that nearly two-thirds of the households are low-income, and I often see folks in need negotiating traffic as they push their carts or carry heavy bags as they make their way from Barber Boulevard Transit to the food banks in Multnomah Village. In addition, BES has expressed concern that this section lacks proper channeling of stormwater. Instead, the slanting streets funnel the water through yards, dumping muddy water into the catch facing below. SWIM has offered a sensical solution to the unique challenges of the southwest streets and addresses safety and peaceable livability issues. I urge you to please adopt and fund this project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Ann Fitzgerald, and I'm here on behalf of Southwest Neighborhoods Coalition. Sweeney submitted letters in support of Southwest in Motion on September 20th and earlier this week on December 3rd. I really want to extend my thanks to P-BOT staff, Nick Falbo, and Kevin Donahue, who shepherded this plan through the last two years. It's actually been underway since 2013, and we're really glad that it's finally, finally coming to some closure. Last night, we had an open house on the southwest Capitol Highway project, the game-changer project between Multnomah Village and West Portland that is going to actually get people out of their cars and start walking to these town centers. It's a win-win for water quality, it's a win-win for the Water Bureau, and it's a win-win for people living in southwest Portland, and we're really excited. But these projects are really expensive, and we know that they're very expensive. And that's why one of the objectives of SWIM was to try to look for cheaper alternatives. So we've rescoped and refined some projects and have some innovative approaches, because something is better than nothing. So Southwest Neighborhoods urges City Council to strengthen the implementation strategy and funding. You've heard a lot about that today. Today in SWIM, only a few crossings and two protected bike lanes are funded, and Commissioner Fritz already noted, they're paint. So we also have a big project in the running for a metro regional flexible funds grant, and we're hoping that projects like that can be funded through these larger metro packages. But if you really want people to walk and bike in southwest, you need more than paint, you need infrastructure. But a simple way, another thing that nobody's mentioned yet, is to make it a priority to trim vegetation within the right-of-way. Couple of years ago, P-BOT maintenance staff came through our neighborhood on Taylor's Ferry Road and on Garden Home Road and took these big saws and just cut back the blackberry bushes. And just doing a more routine, at least once a year, trimming of the vegetation would go a long way in giving people more room to walk and bike in southwest. And finally, when we finally get some of these projects funded, please involve us in the design. Southwest residents are very passionate about our neighborhoods, and we really want to continue to be involved. So with that, I want you to approve the Southwest in Motion Plan, and we look forward to working with you on implementing it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lisa Caballero. I'm president of the Nick Falbo Fan Club. I did it, Nick. I told him I was going to. And I'm a fan of everybody sitting out here, including the three or four staff members over here. Nick has been... I wasn't on the advisory committee or the stakeholder committee. I was just another annoying neighbor that kept horning in. Nick has been incredibly generous with his time. He had time for all of us. It was amazing. And I want to address something that Ryan and Nick said, and that you were asking about, Commissioner Fritz, is about the connectivity. This crowd out here is not going to let anything go unconnected. They are all connected. And what the SWIM process did, and what Nick shepherded so well, was to leverage this incredible knowledge that is sitting out here today, that they blow me away. Some of them are 10, 20, 30 years been doing this. And they found low-cost, high-impact projects that it's... Looking at a map, it might not be clear why that little corner and that little thing is important. It's important because somebody out here said it was, and they've got all this experience with it. So I'd like to thank everybody out here, too. They did a lot of work. And please vote for SWIM. Please fund the things that are going to fund SWIM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Our, Don Bach, Glenn Bridger, and Phil Richman.
Glenn, hear you there.
Don, do you want to start?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council members, pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to support SWIM. This is really great.
Can you turn this on?
Okay, thank you. Basically, I'm Don Bach. I live in Hillsdale, as one of my Jewish friends calls the Jewish Alps. We have a lot of walkers there, including a lot of southwest trails walkers. I'm here representing Southwest Trails, a very active volunteer organization focused on pedestrian and bicycle safety, connectivity, and ease of use. We have more hands-on experience with trails and walking experience in southwest Portland than any other organization. We lead two monthly walks all over southwest Portland. One's a slow walk, one's a fast walk, or one's a short, one's long, and we get a lot of interested people in that. Our volunteers have invested thousands of hours in building and maintaining southwest urban trails and other key pedestrian infrastructure. We're the lead in the 4T Trail and maintain its website, as well maintain the online smartphone maps of southwest Portland. If you haven't tried those out, look at our website, see how to download an app, and it'll tell you where you are relative to the trails. Our early efforts of this was basically a southwest primitive view of Vision Zero. What we were trying to do with Southwest Trails was basically help people be safe by walking on streets that were safe and/or trails and connections. And so we've got 40 miles of routes, most of which are not on arterials that don't have sidewalks. There are a few. We had no alternatives. We've also then had to build a lot of connections. These connections mostly were stairs and steep slopes, and they're not ADA-compatible. That doesn't mean, in my opinion, that we should not continue to do this kind of thing to help as many people as can use it, although they aren't ADA-compatible and probably can't be made that way due to cost and terrain. It's really steep country. Nevertheless, we feel it's important to recognize the disparity of sidewalks in southwest Portland. You can see by the chart, and basically, east Portland has 128 miles without sidewalks. In southwest, we have 210 miles without sidewalks. That is really, really huge, and that's why a lot of people aren't walking, because it's not safe in many circumstances, as Amanda has very well pointed out. You know, we really need to have that attention paid here, because there's a myth out there that says east Portland's got the greater deficiency. That's not true. The greater deficiency is in southwest Portland. Moving on from that, we want to fix that. We fix it with SWIM. There's a lot of great work done here by Nick, and I highly commend him. I'll put a yay-yay behind all the comments that have been made earlier. But we do not even have one continuous bicycle route to downtown, other than the Willamette Greenway. This is another very serious deficiency in our infrastructure. We support SWIM in general. We'd ask for full funding immediately, and we have one safety concern, and that is downhill bikes on a pedestrian and bike combined lane, where you've got pedestrians trying to go uphill against bikes or downhill with bikes. It's very dangerous. We don't want to have that happen. Change the standard. Don't let that happen. I'm going to go on, and Glenn will continue.
Thank you, Don. Next slide.
My name is Glenn Bridger. I represent Southwest Trails, along with Don. We supplement the existing city infrastructure with a dramatic urban trail system. It's signed, you've seen the signs. If you've been in southwest, you know where those trails are. And it's important that we have a currently mapped, proper system available to all the people who walk in southwest Portland. It really does add to our ability to move around our community, and we want to make sure that they complement one another. But what we need to do, next, is make sure we are properly mapping our projects. We have a lot... No, I'm not saying a lot. We have about eight projects that need to be adjusted in the city's mapping, so that the signage can be proper, and so that the city's walking maps can be proper. We've made some requests on these in the past and have not been able to get these adjustments made since the plan was put together 15-plus years ago. Let me share with you, in addition to the big map, on in to some specifics. At 45th Avenue at Gabriel Park, the presently marked route goes along the highly unwalkable southwest 45th Avenue. The recommended route cuts through a property directly over to entry into the park to eliminate the very uncomfortable walking, an unsafe walking on 45th. So as we adjust this, people will be safer when they move. It'll save anxiousness and hopefully also lives. Let me also go on to a situation in Ash Creek neighborhood. Once again, these maps are available online reference, but the presently marked route goes to a dead end at the city limits. And there is an alternate route that has been mapped out and is recommended that it be implemented, that it will connect up and flow on through into our neighboring cities. So we need to make these corrections. There are about eight corrections, and we'd ask you to help us, guide us on how to make these corrections, or make them as a part of this specific action. Once again, I heard someone talk about being a member of the Nick Falbo Fan Club. I'm another one of those members. I love the work. He listens. We have a great plan here. We need to fund it. We also need to fund not just as planned, but we have to plan on the endgame, because these little projects are going to help us right now, but our kids want them 10 years from now also. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn. Good afternoon.
Hello. Good afternoon, mayors, councilors. My name is Phil Richmond. I'm here on behalf of the Street Trust to stand in support of Southwest Emotion. For over two decades, I've called Southwest Portland home. I've worked with these guys along the way, spent almost every day walking, riding, busing, driving, and most recently, personal e-scooting on our unique set of streets. As you know, Southwest Portlanders face many of the same challenges our neighbors in East Portland face, including high-speed, high-crash arterials, short-list roadways that only seem reasonable to travel by car, even for short distances. This has to change. We need to support SWIM, what you are doing. Thank you. Provides a blueprint. In recent years, I've seen projects completed that helped make this possible. Removing of the double-yellow lines on collector's streets like Southwest Maplewood, adding crosswalks near schools like those at Southwest 35th and Huber recently, adding protective bike lanes near PCC on Capitol Highway, and speed cushions on Southwest Spring Garden are all examples of work well-done by P-Bot. This can continue. I happen to live on Southwest 19th Avenue. I'm still on a dirt road, but I do enjoy walking down to that improved, shared roadway. It's a beautiful thing. But I want to mention, I'd be remiss if I didn't clarify, an ongoing concern I have about roads and implementation of these plans in Southwest, and to make suggestions specifically for Commissioner Udaly and P-Bot staff to consider. With the idea in mind that your staff recently presented to the Bicycle Advisory Committee, which I sit on, it's two full goals with the Fixing Our Streets funds, of maintaining our streets and making them safer. I'd like to suggest the practice of double-yellow striping collector's streets, specifically those designated as neighborhood walkways in PED-PDX, as both counterproductive and unnecessary. Examples from PED-PDX maps include of roadways that fit this description are Southwest 18th Avenue, Southwest Palatine Hill Road, Southwest Huber, Southwest Fairmount. I'm certain there's many more. My experience as a driver and pedestrian on these roads leads me to believe those who are driving feel more inclined to speed and hold their line in a limited space to the detriment of people walking or cycling. I'd encourage P-Bot engineers to consider implementing the double-yellow line removal and, when possible, adding the bicycle advisory shoulders as common practice. This seems to have worked well in Southwest Maplewood, and I'd expect it to work well in roads like Southwest Fairmount and Palatine Hill Road, both of which have high pedestrian and bike volumes, but relatively low motor vehicle volumes, and again, are classified as neighborhood walkways, per, again, PED-PDX. So in summary, by no means perfect, but we support SWIM, and the Street Trust stands by in support of it as well.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate it. Thanks, all three of you.
That's all who signed up.
Very good. Any further questions or discussion? Very good. This is a resolution. Carla, please call the rule.
Udaly?
I want to thank everyone for coming today. It's a really rare day where we hear from a dozen or more happy constituents, so this feels good. I also want to join the Nick Falbo Fan Club. I think he might be the first Bureau staff I have to have a fan club, so that's always great. I also want to thank Don Bach for being here and for taking me on what I think was the long walk, but I have a feeling may have been the short walk. And just say, I feel like this plan is somewhat in the spirit of Southwest Trails, in that, yes, we are not doing everything that needs to be done, but we are being creative and resourceful and innovative, and we're going to deliver meaningful improvements in the short term to your neighborhood. I want to thank Leah for being here and offering a really unique perspective on this situation that I certainly wasn't aware of, how, you know, we know that these streets are not as safe as they need to be for pedestrians and cyclists, but little did I know, they can interfere with people actually practicing their faith. So it feels really good to move forward with this. I want to thank our P-Bot team, especially Nick Falbo, Star of the Day, for being a great steward and helping develop these visionary plans. In addition, I want to thank Home Forward and Stevens Creek Crossing for hosting the project work group meetings, working group meetings. Leah Safran, again, for connecting the project team with Orthodox Jewish community, and everyone on the Plan Stakeholder Working Group for their participation in this project. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Well, thank you to everybody who's worked on this. I've lived in Southwest Portland for 33 and a half years now, first in the Multnomah neighborhood, and for the last 20-something in West Portland Park. So thank you, neighbors, for all your work to make this a plan that is going to make things better, although, as we heard, it's not going to fix everything. I continue to be concerned about multifamily housing that doesn't have sidewalks to connect to frequent transit. And I also want to echo the Southwest Trails' concerns about the maps, and I will be emailing you to find out, how do I get from Multnomah Boulevard to the community center without going on 45th, which was absolutely terrifying. I did it about a year, nine months ago, and I was like, I am not doing that ever again. So I'm very glad to hear that there is a way. I just hope that we can make the signage clearer, so that people are not hunting around and putting themselves at risk. So thank you very much, Commissioner Udaly. Chris Warner, the P-Bot Director, as Mary Ann Fitzgerald noted, it's been a really long time coming. Also, thank the staff at Southwest Neighborhoods, who've been consistent supporters of the community for so many years. Aye.
Wheeler?
Great work. I appreciate this. Thank you, Commissioner Udaly, to you and to your team, Nick and the entire team at P-Bot. Great presentation. I really enjoyed today's testimony. We heard different perspectives on this, and I think the conversation today, I think, has already made this a richer opportunity. And I saw Nick Madley taking notes as people were making suggestions and recommendations. So thank you for the testimony, all of you who provided it. I'm very happy to support this resolution. I vote aye. Resolution's adopted. Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute recess.
All right, thank you everyone for your patience. We appreciate that very much. It's just the three of us today, so we had to do a little bit of...
Mayor.
We had to do a little bit of organizing. Next item up, Carla, is item number 1126, please, the tree code.
amend trees in development situations code to extend sunset date for certain tree preservation regulations in development situations on private property.
Colleagues, today we continue our deliberations on whether or not to extend the sunset of the 2016 amendments to Title 11. Because Commissioner Fish and Commissioner Hardesty are absent, we do not have four commissioners present and are therefore unable to take the necessary step to vote on this as an emergency ordinance today. We will still hear from the Bureau of Development Services and invited testimony and continue the hearing until next week to take up the ordinances as an emergency and a final vote.
We don't have to do it next week either. We only have to do it next week.
Soon, then. We'd picked next week, Carla, but apparently we do not have four next week, is that right? Well, I'll just finish my statement before you do that. Before we begin our deliberations on the extension of the sunset, I'd like to clarify what is happening to the additional proposed changes to Title 11 and reflections that the city conduct a broader Title 11 review. And we heard significant testimony on this the last time. I've directed my office to develop a resolution in collaboration with the Bureau of Development Services, Parks, all of my colleagues' offices, and Title 11 stakeholders. We will continue to ask for improvements to this resolution to ensure that City Council receives strategic recommendations for how to improve Title 11 and meet our climate and urban tree canopy targets. This resolution will come to council for adoption next month and serve as a work plan for the bureaus going forward. Turning back to the specific question regarding extension, these regulations sunset at the end of this month. We've heard that it's incumbent upon the council to extend the sunset. At the November 21 council hearing, the Bureau of Development Services proposed a two-year extension. Commissioner Udaley proposed an extension until December 31, 2050. Before I call Bureau of Development Services here, is there a council discussion on either of these amendments?
Yes.
Commissioner Udaley.
Thank you, Mayor. So, before I say what I have to say, please, everyone, reserve your disappointment because I think we're going to get somewhere a little better. I would like to withdraw my amendment to extend the tree code to 2050. And here is my reasoning. We're in a climate emergency. I don't foresee a day in my lifetime or future generations' lifetimes when we won't need these tree protections. And it didn't make sense to me in the moment that there was a sunset at all. After pretty extensive conversation with staff and community advocates, I believe that having a shorter extension will actually better hold our feet to the fire as a city to do the work that needs to be done and frankly should have been done years ago. So extending it to 2050 might feel good, but it actually doesn't create that urgency and incentive around getting that work done quickly. I am generally supportive of the resolution that you are developing, Mayor, to do a quick analysis and come back to council as soon as possible with recommendations for removing exemptions and broadening the protections of smaller trees. However, I really want swift action on the removal of commercial and industrial exemption. I believe that a very quick analysis could be made by BPS. This is something that community has been waiting on for eight years since we adopted Title 11. I understand that there's deeper analysis of several areas of Title 11, but this particular one, I don't think is justifiable. The only reason I'm not introducing an amendment today is that we really do need BPS to do this analysis to ensure that what I'm proposing is legally defensible. And that will require a little bit of work, but not the two years that I was hearing, not even six months. I would really like this to come back in the next 30 days. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say about that.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Commissioner Udaley. I share your sentiments exactly. And also, the next time that there are four people here is December 18. And so it will need to be an emergency ordinance at that time. I would like to see an amendment in the resolution to specify when we expect the planning commission and urban forestry commission to hold the required hearings, city attorney to do the analysis and the findings, and how quickly it can come back to council. And that needs to be specified in the resolution on the 18th, please.
Good. All right. And just for my two bits here, I also wanted to learn more about the two-year extension that was proposed by the bureau. My staff reached out to the Bureau of Development Services, Parks, a number of the Title 11 stakeholders, many of whom were present last time, and to your offices. And to me, the question to ask regarding the extension is what is a reasonable timeframe for the Bureau of Development Services, Parks, and stakeholders to deliver a series of recommendations for how the city can improve Title 11 to meet our urban tree canopy and climate goals? The answer that we have heard from both bureaus and stakeholders is five years, notwithstanding what Commissioner Udaley and Commissioner Fritz just said about the specific exemption. So I'd like to introduce an amendment extending the sunset by five years to December 31, 2024. Do I have a second? I do not.
I'd like to discuss what you just said.
Okay, great.
So it shouldn't take five years to do the analysis. What we need to have in the resolution is funding for positions in development services and urban forestry to be able to do the work. We have the list of things that have been problematic over the last five years. What we need to do is figure out, do the public process. So I would be willing to second your amendment to go to five years. I actually disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Udaley, about holding our feet to the fire. We've had this sunset in place for the last three years, and it did not make the city do anything. So it needs to be... We need to acknowledge that there will need to be more funding. I know that Parks is going to be reluctant to prioritize asking for a position in urban forestry when they've got so many other funding challenges, and we had a nightmare budget, as we all know, last year. So that also needs to be part of the city's commitment, that if we're going to extend the sunset to five years, we are going to have a proposal, perhaps from Development Services, Mayor Wheeler, as a request in the budget, to fund the positions that are going to make it happen within two years.
We will have the resolution on the table quickly. I don't know. Sam, what's the timeframe?
We can make it December 18.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if you could come up, please. Sam has actually done the outreach.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Sam Diaz. We can absolutely work with your offices and stakeholders to meet the December 18. We're on multiple drafts and just want to make sure that folks have ample opportunity to include the specific directives that you're pointing out and make sure that we're cognizant of our bureaus' staffing and budget constraints.
So Sam, while I've got you here, so the proposed extensions were two years by the bureau.
Correct.
And Commissioner Udaley has withdrawn her amendment, but it was a longer timeframe. Explain the five years.
So the five-year, the reasoning that we're hearing from the bureaus is to make sure that they can get the staff in place, given the budget constraints, given the staffing expertise that is needed. Within that five years, they will be able to review Title 11, any changes to the current 2016 amendments, the commercial-industrial exemption, and any other additional Title 11 amendments. Commissioner Udaley?
I just can't support such an all-or-nothing approach that puts everything off for five years. I mean, there are some very narrow issues, like the exemptions for commercial and industrial, and I would say also the protections for trees 36 inches and above, when we've heard our canopy is made up of many species that never reach 36 inches.
Let me solve the problem, because it was my understanding that this had been discussed.
No, it has not.
It has not. So why don't we pull the item and hear it later?
I don't think we need to do that. I think we can continue. We can have some discussion here because Commissioner Udaley and I, I believe, would like to be able to vote on something on December 18.
Yes.
If I may...
Three and a half years, this should be done before...
Please, please don't disrupt.
If I may, to Commissioner Udaley's point, there are specific directives that we will incorporate in the resolution. So like the commercial-industrial exemption, we can put that right within the five-year timeframe, not anchored to it, right? So we don't have to wait five years. We can bring up, you know, Bureau of Development Services, Parks, can of course bring it to Urban Forestry Commission, the Planning and Sustainability Commission, and then, you know, bring it before council at, say, like a six-month timeframe. And I believe that that information has been shared with council offices after BDS and Parks have reviewed what that would take.
My office certainly has said that that's not an acceptable timeframe. So I would suggest that you work with our offices over the next week to be able to agree on a resolution that we could vote on unanimously on December 18. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss, is it five years, is it two years? You know, what is that? But I want to second Commissioner Udaley's intent that commercial, industrial, and the large trees need to be taken care of as soon as possible.
Okay. Yes, my apologies, and I look forward to working with your offices on determining what that language is for the resolution for December 18.
And Mayor, I mean, I would prefer to proceed. We have a room full of people who are here to testify. I think this is a really healthy debate. Sam, thank you. I don't believe we need multi-bureau analysis on the exemptions. I think there is one bureau that can answer our questions as to whether it's legally defensible to eliminate those exemptions. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but right, I'm pretty sure I'm right.
And with that in mind, I second the mayor's amendment.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Udaley's withdrawn. We have the amendment for five years is on the table.
And shall we vote on that, to put it on the table?
Did we want to hear from, we had some invited testimony.
Okay.
Correct.
Then I would also like to move to add an emergency clause since we're going to need to vote on it as an emergency on the 18th.
We can't add an emergency clause with three of us, can we?
You can add the emergency clause as an amendment with three votes.
So we can put the amendment on the table. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fritz. We have a second from Commissioner Udaley.
Would you just state for the record?
The reason is, it's in the public interest to get this done as quickly as possible because our planet is on fire.
Yes.
All right. Call the roll.
Udaley?
Commissioner, thank you. We're not in disagreement about the feet-to-the-fire issue. I'm very frustrated and concerned. We have a high volume of information coming at us every week. We are on item 1,227 right now. Things fall through the cracks, and clearly this was one of them, and we can't, we can't continue to leave it where it is. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Wheeler.
Aye. The amendment is adopted.
And then we're going to hear testimony on the amendment's about five years, is that right?
That's my understanding. Kimberly Talent, you're up.
Greetings. Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm Kimberly Talent, Youth Services Manager in Bureau of Development Services. And with me here today, I also have Jen Cairo, City Forester with Parks. So I'm here to present just a brief reminder of the proposed amendment to Title 11 trees, and that's to extend the sunset date for certain tree preservation regulations in development situations on private property.
That's the old one, Kimberly. Was there a new one?
There was. I can go on without it, probably. It's okay.
Can you just move the mic a little bit, please?
So, just to summary of the proposal, the proposal was brought forth was an extension of certain tree regulations from December 31, 2019 to December 31, 2021. The scope applies to regulations for private trees in development situations that were passed in 2016. The scope does not affect exemptions from regulations. As for the intent of the sunset date, it was to acknowledge the 2016 amendments were passed with limited engagement and analysis, and it was referred to as the fast-track or stop-gap amendments. It was not intended to be a date where the regulations expire and revert back to the 2015 regulations. And the sunset date was to incentivize a return to council with a proposal after further engagement and analysis. So just a brief description of the 2016 amendments. What it required was preservation or fee in lieu of preservation for 36-inch trees or greater. It included a higher fee in lieu of preservation for 36-inch trees or greater, and that included an exemption for certain affordable housing projects. It also included a notification requirement for tree removal of 36-inch trees or greater. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to respond to any questions you have at this time, as well as Jen Cairo, City Forester.
Guess we're good to go?
All right.
So we have invited testimony. We have Bob Salinger from the Portland Audubon. Portland Youth Climate Council has at least a representative here. Ezra Hammer from the Portland Home Builders Association, and John Isaacs from the Portland Business Alliance. Greetings and welcome. Thanks for being here. If you could just state your name for the record. Microphones slide around a little bit. About six inches from your mouth is about right. Good afternoon, Bob. Youth before beauty.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Peter Salinger, and I'm here representing the Portland Youth Climate Council. We would like to thank you for inviting us to speak today. We have been working on this issue for nearly a year and are thrilled that the city is beginning to take action. I would like to begin by requesting a public testimony period. Our understanding is that the sunset clause hearing was extended in order to solve the due process dilemma presented by Commissioner Udaley's amendment. While written submissions are available, we think it is vital that the city hear from the public on this issue. The Portland Youth Climate Council fully supports a full removal of the sunset clause on large tree mitigation. Nobody wants to come back and hash this out again years down the road. However, we see the next best alternative...
Yes, my apologies, and I look forward to working with your offices on determining what that language is for the resolution for December 18th.
And Mayor, I mean, I would, I would prefer to proceed. We have a room full of people who are here to testify. I think this is a really healthy debate. I, Sam, thank you. I don't believe we need multi-bureau analysis on the exemptions. I think there is one bureau that can answer our questions as to whether it's legally defensible to eliminate those exemptions. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but right, I'm pretty sure I'm right.
And with that in mind, I second the amendment.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Yu Daily's withdrawn. We have the amendment for five years is on the table.
And shall we vote on that? To put it on the table?
Did we want to hear from, we had some invited testimony.
Okay.
Correct.
Then I would also like move to add an emergency clause, since we're going to need to vote on it as an emergency on the 18th.
Yeah.
Oh, second.
We can't add an emergency clause with three of us, can we?
You can add the emergency clause as an amendment with three votes.
So we can, we can put the amendment on the table. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fritz. We have a second from Commissioner Yu Daily.
Would you just state for the record?
The reason is, it's in the public interest to get this done as quickly as possible, because our planet is on fire.
Yes.
All right. Call the roll.
Yu Daily?
Commissioner, thank you. We're not in disagreement about the feet to the fire issue. I'm very frustrated and concerned. We have a high volume of information coming at us every week. We are on item 1,227 right now. Things fall through the cracks, and clearly this was one of them, and we can't, we can't continue to leave it where it is. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler? Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment is adopted.
And then we're going to hear testimony on the amendment's about five years, is that right?
That's my understanding. Kimberly Talent, you're up.
Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm Kimberly Talent, Lead New Services Manager and Bureau Development Services. And with me here today, I also have Jen Cairo, City Forester with Parks. So I'm here to present just a brief reminder of the proposed amendment to Title 11 trees, and that's to extend the sunset date for certain tree preservation regulations in development situations on private property. I think this might be the wrong one.
That's the old one, Kimberly. Was there a new one?
There was. I can go on without it, probably. It's okay. Can you just forward the mic a little bit, please? Thank you. So just to summary of the proposal, the proposal was brought forth, was an extension of certain tree regulations from December 31st, 2019, to December 31st, 2021. The scope applies to regulations for private trees in development situations that were passed in 2016. The scope does not affect exemptions from regulations. As for the intent of the sunset date, it was to acknowledge the 2016 amendments were passed with limited engagement and analysis, and it was referred to as the fast-track or stop-gap amendments. It was not intended to be a date where the regulations expire and revert back to the 2015 regulations. And the sunset date was to incentivize a return to council with a proposal after further engagement and analysis. So just a brief description of the 2016 amendments. What it required was preservation or fee in lieu of preservation for 36-inch trees or greater, included a higher fee in lieu of preservation for 36 trees, 36-inch trees or greater, and that included an exemption for certain affordable housing projects. It also included a notification requirement for tree removal of 36-inch trees or greater. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to respond to any questions you have at this time, as well as Jen Cairo, City Forester.
Yes, we're good to go.
All right.
So we have invited testimony. We have Bob Salinger from the Portland Audubon. Portland Youth Climate Council has at least a representative here, Ezra Hammer from the Portland Home Builders Association, and John Isaacs from the Portland Business Alliance. Greetings and welcome. Thanks for being here. If you could just state your name for the record. Microphones slide around a little bit. About six inches from your mouth is about right. Youth before beauty.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Peter Salinger, and I'm here representing the Portland Youth Climate Council. We would like to thank you for inviting us to speak today. We have been working on this issue for nearly a year and are thrilled that the city is beginning to take action. I would like to begin by requesting a public testimony period. Our understanding is that the sunset clause hearing was extended. In order to solve the due process dilemma presented by Commissioner Yu Daily's amendment, while written submissions are available, we think it is vital that the city hear from the public on this issue. The Portland Youth Climate Council fully supports a full removal of the sunset clause on large tree mitigation. Nobody wants to come back and hash this out again years down the road. However, we see the next best alternative as a five-year extension of the sunset clause, contingent on the city creating a clear resolution to further study mitigation requirements and providing the funding necessary so that we will not find ourselves in the same dilemma come 2025. We appreciate the city's leadership in developing a solution to this issue before the sunset expires, as well as the work of the Urban Forestry Commission and Planning and Sustainability Commission. While we were invited today to speak on large tree mitigation, after reflection, we have decided that it would not be consistent with our values nor with the urgency that the climate crisis necessitates for us to not address commercial and industrial tree exemptions. The two issues are intertwined. Industrial and commercial exemptions should be being voted on today. In reality, they should have been voted on years ago. Title 11 is in need of revision and strengthening, but the fact of the matter is that industrial and commercial exemptions should have been part of the original code. Pushing the exemptions off as part of a larger revision process will only ensure that more trees are cut while we wait for what could be years for a solution. Corporate interests got off on a technicality, and while the city assured the public that they would address the issue after an economic opportunities analysis had been completed, they failed to do so. This is the reason why we see trees coming down at places like Wapato Jail today. This is not an issue that requires a long planning process, because it was already part of the plan. Economic opportunities analysis requirements have been met, and now we must act. Portland needs to be a city of action. Some may look at industrial and commercial land and think of it in the larger global context of climate change and carbon emissions. It is an insignificant decision. I see it as a test. If the city of Portland cannot pass a code change as simple as this, that should have been dealt with years ago, as promised, then what hope do we have of taking on bigger issues? Small changes like this are the first and easiest steps in addressing climate change, and the fact that we are backing off of actions that would have a tangible and positive effect on our community is disheartening. The city passed a 100% renewable energy resolution in 2017, removing industrial and commercial tree exemptions as part of holding ourselves accountable to it. Industry needs to be part of the solution when it comes to protecting trees. Given trees' ability to reduce carbon, to reduce urban heat islands, provide habitat, benefit our health, and mitigate climate change, we cannot afford to push off this decision any longer. The Portland Youth Climate Council appreciates the opportunity that you gave us to speak before you today, and we appreciate your action on large tree mitigation requirements. We respectfully urge you to take immediate action on industrial and commercial tree exemptions, because kicking the can down the road helps no one, least of all youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor, could I just comment? Thank you for taking the time. I know you've been here for a while, so thank you for being off school today. I know that there's going to be a climate action demonstration tomorrow by Portland Public Schools. It's really important also that you're proposing solutions and that you're taking the time to actually work on it yourselves, as well as with us, so thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, and members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be here and to be here with Portland Youth Climate Council and the work that they've done on this, and thank you to all the folks that have shown up today. My name is Bob Salinger. I'm the Conservation Director for the Audubon Society of Portland. We've been involved with the Portland Tree Code for decades, and we served on the committee that helped develop Title 11. Protecting and expanding our urban canopy is critical to creating a healthy, sustainable, and equitable urban landscape. Unfortunately, right now, Portland is not doing enough to either protect its existing tree canopy or to reach its canopy targets. Today, you have an opportunity, not only to lock in important existing protections, but also to make a solid commitment to address existing deficiencies in our tree code. First, Audubon supports the proposal to extend the sunset clause on the big tree amendments for five years. Ideally, we'd like to see this lifted altogether, but we can support this today, because the city is making a commitment to come back and look at the entire tree code. We hope when you do that, you not only retain the big tree protections, but you lower the protections down to smaller trees. Right now, we're protecting big trees in neighborhoods that have a lot of trees. For neighborhoods that don't have a lot of trees, they're not getting them either through this amendment. We need to protect smaller trees so they get to be big trees in our most efficient Second, we are disappointed that you're not taking up immediately the exemptions for industrial and commercial lands, as was recommended by the PSC and the Urban Forestry Commission. We do appreciate the comments today by Commissioner Yu Daily and Commissioner Fritz, and look forward to working on these issues in an expeditious manner. From our perspective, these, it's long overdue to lift these exemptions, though. They were adopted when Title 11 was adopted in 2011. They were adopted at the last minute, and they were adopted because the city did not have an up-to-date economic opportunities analysis. We thought that argument was weak at the time, because the argument was that we didn't have enough industrial land to protect trees, and this would take up land, but the reality is, this doesn't take up any land at all. Landowners can cut those trees down and mitigate for them, so there was no loss of land. So we think the original argument was invalid. That being said, the city updated the economic opportunities analysis in 2016, and despite the fact that it left capacity to protect trees and do other environmental regulations on these lands, the city council never came back, as it promised it would, to revisit this issue. And we're revisiting it today, but we're many years too late. And the fact is, we are losing trees. As Peter's already pointed out, we're losing a huge amount of trees at Wapato Jail, likely in the next couple of weeks, because city council has not taken this up in a timely manner. So it's important that we move forward now and actually get it done. I would also note that we continually hear about the economic opportunities analysis when it's an environmental issue that's on the table, but those same interests that bring up the industrial land deficit when it comes to environmental issues never bring it up when wealthy developers want to upzone their land for commercial purposes or to make more money. We don't hear about it when we talk about putting a baseball stadium on the largest tract of industrial land left on the river that's developable. We only hear about it in the context of environmental regulations, and it is a pretext to drive environmental regulations away, and we need to get beyond that paradigm. So we look forward to bringing this back. We hope you do bring it back, separate from the bigger look at the tree code. It should come back in the next couple of months, and we really appreciate the timeline that Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Yu Daily are talking about. We think it should go back down, get it done right, and bring it back in the first quarter of 2020. Lastly, we do support a big look at the tree code. There are deficiencies in it. There are things that can be improved, things that could be strengthened, and so we do urge you to allocate funding in the next budget cycle, the 2020-21 budget cycle, to do that big look at the tree code. That's different than correcting the unfinished business of industrial lands, but let's take a big look at the tree code, and we believe that should be done in 12 to 18 months. There's absolutely no reason to take three, four, or five years. The city has gotten into these extended planning processes that actually exclude the public, because no one has the resources to participate for three to five years in a process like that. And frankly, these plans don't even last that long. It takes longer to develop them than it does to implement them. And so we think 12 to 18 months is more than sufficient to take a look at this plan, update it, bring it back, and approve, making it stronger. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today, and look forward to working with you on this going forward.
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and members of the Portland City Council. My name is John Isaacs, and I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Portland Business Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again today. The Portland Business Alliance is the Greater Portland Chamber of Commerce, and we represent the largest and most diverse business network in the region. The alliance takes direction from our members to advocate on their behalf at all levels of government to support commerce, community health, and the shared and sustainable prosperity for our region and our state. On behalf of our 1,900 members and the Portland Business Alliance Land Use and Housing Committee, I am here today to express our support for the compromise five-year extension of the sunset date for tree preservation regulations in development situations on private property. The alliance is committed to working with all of the stakeholders here today, the city council, the Planning and Sustainability Commission, and bureau staff, to review all aspects of the regulations, including a full examination of whether the current exemption for industrial and employment lands is the right policy for balancing all of our city's goals. As we have discussed with each of you over the past year, we have received clear direction from our membership that the alliance must shift to be more collaborative and willing to work with all stakeholders to develop the best policy for our entire city, not just what may be best for business. That means the alliance, as the voice of our region's business community, must be willing to be open to discussing changes to policies, such as the current exemption on tree removal regulations for commercial and employment lands that in the past we may have opposed. It is likely that much better policy can be crafted that takes into account all of our shared goals on housing costs, the urban environment, climate change, and economic development. It is time for all of us to stop viewing these as competing priorities. As we make this shift, we ask that all city bureaus and stakeholders work to ensure that the city's policy development processes take the time to have these thoughtful conversations and deter tactics, such as last-minute amendments that plague our partisan political bodies. Portland can and should do this right. In closing, we believe the five-year extension strikes the right balance between ensuring our current regulations protecting trees remain in place and providing the staff the time they need with the necessary resources to conduct the data-driven analysis we need to identify and recommend improvements to Title 11 that benefit all Portlanders. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ezra Hammer. I'm with the Home Builders Association Metropolitan Portland. We represent the men and women who build, remodel, and develop housing, small-scale housing, in the Portland metro region. I'm here today to thank you for your continued attention to Title 11, specifically as it relates to the trees in development situations. And despite any misconceptions, to the contrary, I'm here to say that a robust tree canopy is loved by all Portlanders, including developers. Trees and housing complement each other, and any good builder knows that more trees, rather than less, leads to vibrant communities. I'm here to speak about some of the deficiencies in the existing tree code. So unfortunately, due to some rigid inflexibility with the existing regulations, the city often forces developers to remove trees that private arborists believe can be maintained. And this is due to the lack of flexibility required to analyze trees on a case-by-case basis, even when unique development situations exist. Additionally, due to the unorthodox fine structures that exist in Title 11, the city regularly adds tens of thousands of dollars to the cost of new housing, and this happens during our unprecedented housing crisis, at a time when we all recognize we need to be building more housing within our built urban framework. Specifically, due to the existing fee structure, Title 11, in some ways, is less related to mitigation and more focused on dissuading the removal of trees. However, these fines in Title 11 are often triggered by the city itself, rather than a developer-driven process. As an example, the Bureau of Transportation regularly requires the removal of trees in order to build sidewalks and locate driveways. These improvements are critical, and they're important, however, they do trigger the removal of trees, which in turn leads to significant fines. These are the odd sorts of situations that create a scenario where the city is both requiring the removal of trees and then punitively fining a builder for removing those trees. We believe that we can find a better solution to those situations. Additionally, we're very appreciative of the effort to expand an analysis of the entire Title 11 code. This is something that, as Mr. Salinger mentioned, is long overdue, and we hope that by working in a collaborative process and by supporting the five-year extension, we can think holistically about our tree canopy in a way that will allow us to better preserve and enhance trees within the built environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Commissioner Yu Daily.
Mr. Wood, is that?
No, ma'am. Mr. Hammer.
Hammer, oh, Hammer, sorry. When you mention trees that developers are compelled to take down by the city, are you talking about the root zone issue?
So it's two separate issues. One, the root zone requirements don't allow for analysis on a case-by-case basis, so it is not uncommon for developers to remove trees on paper and then preserve them as part of the development process when their private arborists tell them that they can be maintained in a safe fashion. The issue that I was speaking to is the scenario where a city bureau requires the removal of trees in order to complete improvements in the public right-of-way. So whether it's building a bioswale or whether it's building an enhanced sidewalk, those sorts of public improvements oftentimes require the removal of trees, and in those scenarios, we would hope that the city could find a different way to require mitigation.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that concludes our invited testimony. So we've already taken a vote on the emergency clause, so that's done. At this point, we'll continue it then, and we need to pick a date.
Do we need to take testimony on the amendment, or are we just going to wait?
No, because it's already been part of the discussion.
Okay. So I believe the next term.
Unless legal counsel tells me otherwise, but I think according to what I have here, the answer is no. There's the pending amendment on the table about the five years.
Right.
And it's within your discretion, council's discretion, whether I hear testimony on that, or...
Did we have a sign-up seat for it, Carla?
No.
So we could wait and see what comes back, and then have you testify on the whole package, which might make the most sense? Because I think certainly for Commissioner Yu Daily and me, our support for whether it's five years or not depends on what the resolution looks like. So when is the next time that all five of us are here, please?
Or at least four. The 12th is next date, but that's a very full agenda. That's a Thursday, so the 18th...
We can stay late. We got to get the work done by the end of the year.
So did you want the 12th, then, the Thursday?
Whatever day. If we have to stay late, we're going to stay late.
Is there an earlier time on the 18th?
We're pretty booked in that morning, too.
How about the afternoon of the 18th? How about the afternoon of the 18th?
Commissioner, oh, well, she's leaving 4:30. That's the fossil fuels, and they're going till 4:30.
Great. Why don't we book it at 4:30?
4:30 on the 18th?
Make it 4:45, just to be safe.
Commissioner Yu Daily's out at 4:30.
I'm sorry.
On the 18th, she's out at 4:30.
Who is out?
Commissioner Yu Daily is out.
I am, and it's a vote on T-2020 that I can't miss, but I can stay late on the 12th.
Do you want to just do regular agenda on the morning of the 18th?
I think we need to have a time certain, because of the...
One time certain, okay.
It's going to have to be an afternoon.
What's the opportunities on the 12th, and are all five of us here on the 12th?
Yes, you are. It would be 4:40.
Make it 5:00.
5 o'clock?
Yeah, because it'll be a lot of testimony, so count on a night meeting.
That's also your fourth, fifth agenda for the PF.
That's fine.
The what agenda? Oh, the legislative agenda?
Yeah, PF is on regular agenda that afternoon, so that's another 20 minutes, 30...
It'll be a long day, but we can do it. That's what we're paid to do.
Okay, so 5 o'clock time certain on the 12th.
Good. I look forward to that.
See you all next week, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Good. Couple of comments I'd like to make just before I move this. So I feel a little embarrassed and chagrined, because I feel like I got holding a bag. I also, where's Bob? Bob, I do share the sense of urgency. There he is, hiding behind the large novelty clock. I do share the sense of urgency, but I have also been advised, if we moved forward on the elimination of the exemption on commercial industrial use without a thorough public process, we would lose in court, and legal counsel can confirm that. And so that is the balancing act that I'm trying to do here. I not only want to make sure that we have a good product, I want to make sure that we have a product that actually sticks. I don't want something remanded. So that's the concern I've been trying to balance. And I thought we had had that conversation council-wide through our usual channel, but apparently the communications didn't happen, or they didn't happen clearly, so I apologize to my colleagues for that. We are adjourned. We've moved it. Thank you.
When is the reschedule?